Clock is displayed on the chamber monitor and will indicate how much time is remaining. A bell will sound when you have 30 seconds left. Speakers registered on the consent agenda items will be taken following the announcements of any items being pulled from consent. Speakers registered on non-consent items, other than public hearing and zoning cases, will be taking following council announcements. Speakers will be given three minutes to speak on all items within those blocks that they registered to speak on. Before you begin your comments, please state your name. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette, and good morning to everyone. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to your four-city council meeting. I'll call us to order.
Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledges of allegiance. Today's invocation will be provided by Pastor David Grabel from Celebration Community Church.
Good morning. The scriptures remind us that weeping may linger for a night, but joy comes in the morning. Will you join your hearts with me as we pray? God of joy, each member of this council and each member of the city staff give themselves to serving the people of Fort Worth. Yet the struggles of public service can be more sometimes than we and they can bear. So grant them, and all of us, courage, wisdom, and love today to speak clearly, to listen carefully, and to choose the paths that bring justice to all people in our city. And as they bring justice and life to all, may they find joy in their work. We offer this prayer in the name of the Holy One, the Maker of all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, states of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, and just as for all.
Honor, protection, and flag. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, to God, and to the one who is with us.
Our first items will be special presentations, with the first one being a presentation of recognition celebrating 60 years of Tarrant County College.
Good morning, and I see that we have two wonderful guests here in the Fort Worth City Council Chamber. Our chancellor, Elva LeBlanc, and vice chancellor, Reginald Gates. Thank you both for being here. I'm going to give my remarks from here and then greet you there at the front. So if you would like to stand at the microphone so we can all admire, Elva's always well-dressed, so there's no telling what she has on today. I think each of us on this dais could speak about the importance of Tarrant County College to our own families, possibly to our own journeys in education, but most certainly to the entire community all across Tarrant County and beyond. It's very amazing to me that we're celebrating 60 years of Tarrant County College today, and the continued leadership, and visionary leadership, rather, of Elva LeBlanc continues, and we're so pleased that you took the time to be with us today, Elva. The Board of Trustees, the Tarrant County College Foundation, faculty and staff, businesses and education partners, TCC has truly grown into a powerful economic engine, generating $2.3 billion annually and serving 100,000 students across a wide range of programs, including high-demand fields from healthcare, aerospace, radio, TV, film, public safety, automotive technology, education, information technology, and so many more. Today, one in every 28 Tarrant County residents is a TCC student. As our region continues to grow rapidly, Tarrant County College is rising to meet the demand, strengthening workforce development, and serving as a launchpad for opportunity, advancement, and true success. Our community is stronger, smarter, and more prepared for the future because of the enduring impact of Tarrant County College. And it's my great pleasure today to take part in a recognition celebrating 60 years of Tarrant County College. Dr. LeBlanc, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Parker, city council members, and city manager Jay Chapa. Thank you for having us today. This is much appreciated for your recognition of Tarrant County College, 60 years of service to the people of Fort Worth and Tarrant County. 60 years ago, our founders imagined a college where access, opportunity, and excellence could thrive. Thanks to our Board of Trustees, faculty, staff, partners, and community leaders like you, TCC has become a catalyst for change. Education is the service we provide our community, one class, one student, and one impactful experience at a time. This summer, an economic impact study found that TCC generates $2.3 billion in added income for Tarrant County annually, supporting one in every 55 jobs. Behind these numbers are real stories: first-generation graduates, working parents, and learners driving our region forward. TCC reached post-pandemic milestones this year with record numbers of dual-credit students completing 15 hours and students completing associate degrees. This fall, we have over 49,000 students that started yesterday, and we witnessed the traffic jams and lack of parking. Those were all good problems to have. These results are possible because of our partnerships with the entire educational enterprise. Countywide, we have 100 dual-credit campuses, 14 early college high schools, 17 pathways in technology locations, and a first-of-its-kind adult high school. Thank you, city of Fort Worth, for your partnership and support as we continue to shape the future of our community by meeting the workforce needs of today and cultivating the workforce opportunities of tomorrow. Thank you so very much for having us.
friends with the YMCA, specifically the William McDonald YMCA. And council, if you want to join me and take a photograph, I think it'd be more than appropriate for the entire council to take part in this. Yeah, just on it.
Today is a good day. I really wanted to recognize the McDonald YMCA. Many may not know, but many years ago, the McDonald YMCA was on the hill of Berry, and it was tore down, and it stayed tore down for at least about several years. I don't know if y'all know the history behind it, but we was able to rebuild it about five years ago, and AJ have taken on the role for executive director, and it has been a wonderful experience to be able to collaborate with the YMCA, with leadership and programs, and back-to-school events, and so we wanted to take this time out. They also work with the Harambe Festival. The Harambe Festival moved from Evan and Rosedale to the McDonald YMCA every year, and they service probably thousands of people for that whole weekend, as well as, I think, every month, y'all do food giveaway drives, and the list goes on and on. And so we really wanted to show the support that the YMCA has been doing in District 8. So the city of Fort Worth wants to special-recognize and present AJ McLeod, District Executive Director, YMCA of Metropolitan Fort Worth, outstanding community service and leadership. Since assuming the role of Executive Director of William McDonald YMCA, and also now the Eastside YMCA Director, what's your new title?
District Executive.
District Executive Director. All right, I need a job, okay. Mr. AJ McLeod and his dedicated team has demonstrated unwavering commitment to serving families from all backgrounds within District 8, now 5, now 6 as well. Their efforts promote healthy living, youth development, and community engagement. Mr. McLeod's impact extends beyond the McDonald YMCA, overseeing Eastside, Ryan, Sports Complex, and the team of 160 staff members, including seven directors and five coordinators. Under his leadership, the YMCA has developed a wide range of inclusive programs from all ages, such as teen culinary arts, welding, automotive skills, parenting courses, workforce solutions, and gun safety initiatives. In addition, he has fostered valuable collaborations and community programs, including wellness initiatives, active older adults activities, and partner with Tarrant County College and others. We, the city of Fort Worth, proudly recognize AJ McLeod and the William McDonald YMCA for their best doing work in District Number 8, your community service and dedication to the city of Fort Worth. Thank you, sir, for all that you do. Would you have some words for us today?
I just want to say thank you. Our team works really closely with the city. We were able to do a lot of those programs through the city partnership with the CCPD funding that allowed our teams to be able to have access to programs that'll give them opportunities outside of high school, but as well as just having healthy living strategies in our community and making sure we're addressing some of the chronic needs. So we appreciate your partnership. We appreciate the city and all that you guys do for us, and just being a part of the city of Fort Worth and trying to serve as many people as we can. So thank you.
Who do you have with you?
Oh, I have our executive director over Eastside YMCA, Ms. Beverly Brown, then our teen and sports director, Mr. Leon Hampton. They're both integral parts of our team. The rest of our team is at work, so we have a slew of directors and coordinators that make it possible for us to serve as many people throughout Tarrant County each and every year. So thank you, guys.
All right.
Next will be items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda.
Actually, Jeanette, we need you to come stand in this middle microphone for a second. She's going to hate this, y'all.
I already hate it, mayor.
I can't see your face, but I can feel it from here. Come on down, Jeanette. For those that aren't aware, Jeanette Goodall is our city secretary and does an amazing job herding the cats. We are the cats. And today, Councilwoman Nettles has a very important surprise for you. I'll turn it over to Chris.
Hey, Jeanette.
Hey, councilmember. Do I need to resign?
No. I want to recognize Jeanette today, and Jeanette is, as mayor says, our city secretary. And from day one since she's been here, working for the city hall and all of us elected officials and all of our drama that we have, she has also taken time out of her special day each year to dedicate her time to District 8 and provide school supplies. And I think it is a, it needs to be recognized and honored. I believe the first year that she did it, she said, "Well, I got some school supplies." And I think we had about three other, four other vendors that came, and Jeanette brought a whole U-Haul truck with her sister, and they just had school supplies and school supplies and school supplies. And we have done it for four years, and this last time, she was the only vendor that brought school supplies. And I believe we served, I don't know, AJ, about 300?
800.
800 families. That deserves a round of applause. And I know you don't do it for fame or acknowledgement. You do it for the kindness of your heart, and I just wanted to take time out today to say that we appreciate you, because some of those kids had it not been for you, this year and each year would not have school supplies. And so today, I have a proclamation for you that I'm going to present to you, and I want to also give one to your sister. I don't know if we was able to get the slideshow, if they made the slideshow.
There's a great picture up here.
There it is. That is Jeanette and her sister working hard at the back-to-school drive. And so I'm going to come down, and I also have another surprise for you. Is Sarah here? Is she coming?
Thank you.
Yeah, and there is a fight on this dais because some of them want some, so that's up, you know. But it's not for them, it's for you. Okay. So, and I'm not going to read all this because I did articulate what we had done, but I just really want to show you support and really appreciate all the work that you have done. And so our councilman, Chris Nettles, of District 8, are proud to recognize and commend Jeanette, Fort Worth City Secretary, and her sister for their unwavering support and generosity over the past four years. Their continued donation of school supplies for District 8 annual back-to-school giveaway has made a profound impact on District 8 community. Ms. Jeanette and her sister have dedicated their time and resources, spent their own money and their dime, to ensure that children within our district are well-prepared for the upcoming school year. Their contributions included backpacks, lunchboxes, pencils, binders, rulers, crayons, pencils, folders, notepads, and more. Our giving generosity without limits, ensuring that every child has the tools they need to succeed and to start the school year with confidence. On behalf of the city and the residents of District 8, I extend my heartfelt gratulatory remarks to Ms. Jeanette and her sister for their continued love, support, and dedication. Thanks for their kindness, and we are able to serve 200-plus, well, actually 800 kids a year. So thank you, Jeanette. This is presented to you and your sister.
Yay, Jeanette.
Thank you all. As I tell folks, they ask me, they think I'm crazy, and they ask me why I do it, and I said, "Well, simply because one of these children may be the one that's taking care of me when I'm old and senile, and maybe they will remember some crazy lady gave them a lunchbox with Mickey Mouse on it." So you're welcome.
Councilwoman Rebecca, maybe if you're nice, Jeanette will give you a piece of cake since Chris didn't make you one. Apparently so, yeah. I know we got you off your rhythm there, Jeanette. Sorry about that, but that was well-deserved. Great job, Chris.
I don't know where we were. Items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda.
We have three items to be withdrawn. MNC 250746 is being withdrawn from the consent agenda so that Councilmember Beck can make some remarks. MNC 25-0784 is being removed from the consent agenda at the request of Councilmember Peoples so that she can make a motion with an amendment. And MNC 2508, I mean 0780 is being removed from the consent agenda so that Councilmember Crane can recuse.
Items to be continued or withdrawn by staff?
We have two items. MNC 250759, public hearing application is being continued to September 16, 2025, and MNC ZC 25078, the enclave at Tavallo Park, is being continued to September 16.
Mayor, before we take the consent agenda speakers, I need to read one correction into the air, into the record. For MNC 25-0791, located on page 10, the council district should be District 5 rather than 4.
Thank you, Jeanette.
Mayor, I believe we have two consent agenda speakers.
We do. Our first speaker is Bob Willoughby, followed by Adrian Smith.
Yeah, it's working. There it is. I was looking for that clock. It already lost a second when you guys cut me. What this is, is about putting together a committee for wastewater in the city of Fort Worth. Well, two times I've caught corruption in our water department. One is filmed, it was on Channel 5 News, I got that home some years ago, and just not too long ago, a million dollars in wastewater, I mean, putting in a lateral line that was unnecessary in our area. And you know, the city didn't even contact the neighborhood association. This was a petition job that was done, and it got passed because of community engagement. Ogo, that works for community engagement, built a new house down at the end of the street, and she wants a lateral line in. We all have one acre properties, we all have septic lines. Maybe in the future, a lateral line may be necessary when you have enough people tapping into it to pay for it. But a million dollars for one person? Well, the director of the water department seems to be pretty good, because when I told him, they didn't go through the right channels or the right procedures, as it says, it's a petition job, not a permit job or anything. Petition means you get the neighbors to sign on. They bypassed the neighborhood association. They didn't ask them because they knew they didn't agree. It was not feasible, is why. Don't waste our money like this. But her, working for the city, friends with Mayor Mattie Parker, rules don't matter. I came down here and told the city about that. Well, let me go back just a little bit. When I told the director, they had heavy equipment out there and had it started on, and they pulled it all out. They loaded up all this stuff, they stopped the job on the spot and moved it all out, and the director found out that it did not go through the right procedures. He did the right thing. But unfortunately, in this city, if you don't have a mayor and a manager, you don't have anything, okay? And I brought this down here to ask, why did they bring it back five days later and continue the job? They brought it back, and they still didn't answer. City manager never did answer either. I bet you never answered. I asked you about that. Million-dollar job, and you wouldn't even answer. No, we don't need a committee. This is what this is about. A committee's no good when at the top is corrupt. It's no good. It's a waste of time, waste of money until you have a mayor and a manager. I tell you right now, the mayor is a tree of the city. Matthew's 12, verse 33. If the tree is good, it'll bear good fruit. If the tree is corrupt, it'll bear corrupt fruit. Mayor Parker is 100% corrupt. And one way to prove that, we would have a public presentation on this agenda today. But we don't have that anymore because Mayor took it away. She don't want to hear the people talk. She took an oath to serve the people and it took away their right to speak. See, we're not allowed to at this meeting here to have a public comment. It's coming up in October, and you watch these people pass it again because they're communists. It's a communist rule, communist city, and it's corrupt with a mayor and city manager. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Adrian Smith. It's Mr. Smith here. Counsel, that's the conclusion of our speakers this meeting, this evening, this morning on consent agenda. I entertain a motion. Got a motion and a second, counsel. Any other discussion? Thank you, comrades. Please vote. I've had my coffee this morning, Jay. And motion carries.
The next item is MNC 25-0746.
Thank you. And before we move forward with the motion, I'm going to allow Councilmember Beck to say a few things.
Thank you. I would like to recognize that Fred Roush III is here with us in the audience today, and I'd like to give you the opportunity to come down and say a few words, if you'd like to, before we take this vote. While he's making his way down, I just want to say thank you to city staff, city manager Jay Chapa, city manager David Cook before him, that did the work to allow us to be a partner with this particular memorial. This partnership is important, and it's important that the city of Fort Worth, for the city of Fort Worth, to acknowledge and reflect on our community's painful history, and this is vital to creating a healthy and inclusionary place for us to all call home. So I'm glad to hear a few words from the family now.
To Mr. City Manager, Mayor, councilmembers, I just want to say, you know, thank you. For everybody that doesn't know, my grandfather is the only recorded African-American to be lynched in Tarrant County. And so we are honoring him by building a memorial park in his name. So I just want to say thank you to the city, to our guests, for everybody's continued support. We've been working on this journey for many, many years, as Councilwoman Beck knows, and it's come to fruition. And we're so thankful, and also, coming from the Roush family, we want to say thank you to everybody. And we're so grateful and appreciative for everybody's support to finally get us there to reach this, this great accomplishment, this great goal, which is building the Mr. Fred Roush Memorial. Also, too, I have another TCC PJ. I'm also the president of the Tarrant County Coalition for Peace and Justice, and our program chair is here, Ms. Tamika Gordon, and she has a few words, too.
Thank you again. My name is Dr. Tamika Gordon, and I just want to say the development of the Mr. Fred Roush Memorial Park is both an act of remembrance and a pathway towards reconciliation. In this way, the Mr. Fred Roush Memorial Park is more than a park. It is a living testimony that remembrance and reconciliation can coexist, offering both a sacred space for mourning and a hopeful space for transformation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And with that, Mayor, I enthusiastically move to approve.
Got a motion and a second, counsel. Any other discussion? If not, please vote. Motion carries.
Next will be MNC 25-0784.
And Councilmember Peoples, I believe you have an alternative motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve MNC 250784 with the following modification: that the proposal for the segment of East Berry Street from Edgewood Terrace to Loop 820 be modified to allow on-street parallel parking.
Thank you, Councilmember Peoples. Got a motion and a second, counsel. Any other discussion? Please vote. Motion carries.
Next will be MNC 25-0780.
Councilmember Crane?
Yes, I've been advised by council due to my legal, my wife's employment at childcare associates, I'll be recusing myself from this vote.
Entertain a motion, counsel. Got a motion and a second? Motion carries.
Next will be announcements of upcoming and recent events and recognition of citizens by council.
Thank you. Councilmember Flores?
Thanks, Mayor. All right, you have the first slide up, please. Okay, at the top, the top three frames, Air Power, Foundations, Patriot Roundup. I'd like to make a motion to approve MNC 25-0784 with the following modification: that the proposal for the segment of East Berry Street from Edgewood Terrace to Loop 820 be modified to allow on-street parallel parking.
Thank you, Councilmember Peoples. Got a motion and a second, counsel. Any other discussion? Please vote. Motion carries.
Next will be MNC 25-0780.
Councilmember Crane?
Yes, I've been advised by council due to my legal, my wife's employment at childcare associates, I'll be recusing myself from this vote.
Entertain a motion, counsel. Got a motion and a second? Please vote. Motion carries.
Next will be announcements of upcoming and recent events and recognition of citizens by council.
Thank you. Councilmember Flores?
Thanks, Mayor. All right, you have the first slide up, please. Okay, at the top, the top three frames, Air Power Foundation's Patriot Roundup was held at Cowtown Coliseum. I attended, so did Councilmember Crane. And this event supports and celebrates our military National Guard reservists, veterans, and their families, because they need plenty of support. Sometimes, you know, they're, it's very difficult for them to make that outreach. And so this group does that for them. It provides them with those necessary resources. Appreciate Cowtown Coliseum and Air Power Foundation for doing that. The bottom set of slides will show an event that was held recently at our convention center. Nation's Best Sports was recognized by Mayor Parker's office. She asked me on behalf of her and the council to present that to them. This organization has been a Fort Worth-based sports organization for 26 years, so congratulations to them. And I know we're going to have the remodel of the convention center, so we hope to see them back soon when that is completed. Next slide, please. All right, Coffee with a Cop. We had another one in District 2 at local favorite Casa Azul. So appreciate Casa Azul, you know, with support of our Fort Worth PD Northwest Division, Commander Molina, Deputy Chief Ricks, MPOs, and our crime prevention specialist, Doc Kent, for making that happen. And thanks to Joseph Landeros for opening the doors to Casa Azul for us. Then we have some announcements. Okay, first announcement, Yard Smart. This is a pretty good program. You know, I consider myself somewhat green at the thumb, but you can learn a lot of great tips, and there'll be lessons that will help people try to beautify their yard. That's occurring Saturday, September 6th, from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Rose Marine Theater at 1440 North Main Street. So come on out, and we'll help you out there, and there'll also be Spanish-speaking resources as well. It is time to talk about our budget, which we have been doing at the council level. We're going to start making our public outreach to residents so that they can learn more about what priorities we're placing and how we're going to fund them. So please join us at the First District 2 City Budget Meeting. That's going to be Thursday, September 11th at 6:00 PM, and it's going to be held at the Northside Community Center at 18, sorry, 1100 Northwest 18th Street. Hope to see you there. Next slide. All right, we're closing down the summer, and then we're going to do that in great fashion. So Nidozil Summer is coming up. That's done by the historic Northside District and the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. So we're going to have that concert September 13th at Marine Park, and we're going to have a Selena tribute band. So to you, all of you, I say, get your biddy biddy to the park and have some fun. All right, next slide, please. Okay, the United Lowrider Council of Tarrant County is having an event. It's an appreciation, you know, car show and vendor fair Saturday, September 13th, 2025. And that's at the Bob Bowlen Safety Complex, and that is in District 9. They asked me to make an announcement, so this is in Councilwoman Beck's district, so we all hope to see you out there. And if you have any questions regarding vendors, contact Erin Torres at 817-881-2011. And the final announcement I have, please save the date. Hispanic Heritage is coming up. It officially starts September 15th, and we're going to kick it off here at Fort Worth City Hall in our lobby on that date. So hope to see you there. More details pending, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Carlos. Councilmember Larsdorf?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to do an employee spotlight real quick on Julie Warbaugh. She's our community and public engagement liaison, but she's so much more than that. She's a friend of all of our neighborhoods. We have over 40-plus HOAs and NAs, and they said there's no such thing as dumb question, but we all know that's not true. And she answers the amazing questions every time I have one with the grace and patience. So I just really want to say thank you to her with her help in keeping District 4 sane and keep that engine running. Next slide. And we also have our FY '26 budget meeting coming up at Basswood Elementary Saturday morning, September 6th at 10:00 AM. Hope to have some breakfast burritos there, because nothing makes budget meetings more fun than burritos. So if you're not from District 4, please come out and join us for some breakfast burritos and some budget talks. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Councilmember Hall?
It's green. I don't know. Let me try it one more time.
Are we there?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So just a few announcements. We do have our fiscal year budget presentation this week. Actually, it's tomorrow evening. It'll be at Southwest High School in the library beginning at 6:00 PM. Next slide. Next slide. And we also, on the same evening, are hosting the McCart Avenue Corridor Study Public Open House. It is a come-and-go event, a come-and-go event. We're inviting you to come out again at Southwest High School. We tried to work together to make this very convenient for you to participate in both. So the open house starts at 5:00. It goes until 7:00. We're hoping that you'll show up at 5:00 and stay to hear the budget presentation at 6 o'clock. So that will be at Southwest High School, and there'll be people there to help assist you on where to, where to go. Next slide. And just a reminder that the McCart Study Survey Corridor Study Survey is still going on. That survey does close on September 30th, so you still have time to get that done. And just a constant reminder that we have our next Town Hall will be October 2nd at the Come On Community Center at 6:00 PM. And that's all. Thank you.
And Councilmember Beck. Oh, Councilmember Nettles, excuse me.
All right. First off, the police chief form, we was there with a couple of leaders. Next slide, please. Had the opportunity to be with Dr. Peep, not Dr., Councilwoman Peoples, with the Greater Fort Worth Area Negro Business Professional Women's Club 50-year anniversary recognition. Was invited there by Christine Moss, former trustee, and Graham Morrison. Next slide. The Back to School Drive and Community Fair at the William McDonald YMCA, we had a, with Goodwill, we did a back-to-school thing on Thursday. I'm sorry, a job fair on Thursday. And then on Friday, we did the back-to-school drive. I believe it was actually Friday and Saturday. And then I also pledged to give the YMCA support or contribution for $1,000. So if there's anybody else here that wants to support the McDonald YMCA, please do so. Fill out your form there. You see me and my little kicks. All right. Next slide, please. All right, the TCC South Campus Annual Back to School Giveaway, Micah Crane, that was at 7:00 in the morning, and I was there on time. Was it at 7:00, Jeanette? The TCC back to... Okay, I was there. You see me, I'm, pictures are proof that I made it. So I was there with Councilwoman Jeanette Martinez and Rodrick Miles for the back-to-school annual giveaway. Next slide. All right, our budget meeting is going to be at the McDonald YMCA at 12, I think that's the wrong address, 2701 Morrison Street on September 15th at 6:00 PM. Also, the Kappa Alpha Kappas, I'm sorry, let me see. Kappa Alpha Kappa, Kappa Alpha Phi Fraternity, Inc. is having a wellness fair on September 27th from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Kappa House in District 8, 909 Eastern Avenue, Fort Worth, Texas, 76104. Is that all the slides? Thank you.
Councilmember Beck?
Okay, first up, August 16th, this past weekend, we had Amplify 817. Just a huge shout-out to library staff who has put this on four years in a row now. It's a great opportunity. Not often does a library get you into a bar, but in Fort Worth, we do. And we also give you live music as well. So please join us next year for Amplify 817 Showcase. Next slide. Speaking of the library and the great work that they're doing, we do have the location for the future downtown library, but we'd like to hear what kind of programming you want to see in that new space. So we have two opportunities for you. First is September 4th from 3:00 to 5:00 at the First United Methodist Church, and the second is September 13th from 10:00 AM to noon at Broadway Baptist Church. Next slide. All right, we have Fall Gallery Night in the district. It is brought to you by the Art Dealers Association of Fort Worth. We hope to see you there at Seneca Studios from 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM for free live glass, glass-making demonstrations and opportunities. Next slide. All right, we have our budget Town Hall September 8th at University Christian Church at 6:00 PM. I hope to see you all there. Next slide. For those anglers, or particularly those wannabe anglers, the Greenbrier Community Center is having their Fall Fishing Day September 20th from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. It is free. If you don't have your own rod and reel, they will have some there that you can borrow, and they'll have the bait and everything ready for you to go. So if you're interested in fishing, and I will tell you, Parks and Wildlife actually stocks that pond. It's a little-known secret here in Fort Worth. So if you're, if you like bass fishing, there's a few to be caught in that little Fort Worth pond there. Next slide. All right, this is one that I'm particularly excited about. The city of Fort Worth Veteran Outreach Program is partnering with Nextop for a veteran employment workshop and career fair September 26th at Will Rogers Memorial Center and the Stagecoach Ballroom from 10:00 AM to 2:30 PM. And so if you know any veterans that are looking for a job or looking to maybe change careers, I'd highly recommend you send them our way. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And Councilwoman Martinez?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. And so the first slide is a picture of the Fairhaven Neighborhood Block Party. Fairhaven is a part of the Neighborhood Improvement Program, and so we had Neighborhood Services out there. A big shout-out to Oga with Communication and Public Engagement. You know, she's everywhere that we need her to be and is great, has great relationships to all the neighborhood associations within District 11. But we also had Code, Water, Environmental, Transportation, Public Works, Parks and Rec, and of course, Neighborhood Services, and my District 11 team was there. So it was a great event. Huge, huge, huge shout-out to Robert Bass and Eden Elizondo from Neighborhood Services who organized this event. I had the best brisket sandwich that I've ever had in my life at this event. So they did a really good job bringing in those food vendors. And so I just wanted to highlight that event in District 11. Next slide. So the District 11 Budget Meeting will be on September 6th at Eugene McCray Community Center, and so we'll be sharing this on all our platforms. But if you're not able to attend, those meetings will be recorded, and we'll also share those through our newsletter and social media. Next slide. And so a couple events that are happening, most of these are outside of District 11, but I will be a part of the United Lowrider Council of Tarrant County Judges for that event. So it's a First Responder and Veterans Appreciation Car Show and Vendor Fair. So come out. It'll be a great family event on, let's see, what day? September 13th from 12 to 5:00. Save the date for September 16th. We will be in council celebrating in the Fort Worth City Hall in recognition of, what is it? Yasees Septiembre. And also, on October 7th, we will have national events throughout the city, and so our team will be out in the community attending as many events as we can. So thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Martinez. And I believe that's the conclusion of our council announcements.
Right, Mayor. And I believe we have one speaker on non-consent items, if he's here?
Adrian Smith, if he's present. If not, we can proceed. Thank you.
The next will be item 25-5357, which is board appointments from District 5.
Councilmember Peoples?
I apologize. We don't have an appointment today.
Thank you. Do we need a motion to withdraw, or just, we're good?
I'll just mark it as withdrawn.
Thank you.
The next is item 25-5358, board appointments from District 9.
Councilmember Beck?
I request your consideration to appoint the following individual to the Board of Aviation, Beth Thurman, to the, for her first term as the Aviation Advisory Board, effective August 26th, 2025, ending October 1st, 2027. I also request your consideration to reappoint the following individuals, their respective boards, to their respective boards with the terms effective August 26th, 2025, ending October 1, 2027. Corey Malone to his second term as the Historic Cultural Landmarks Commission. Andrea Garcia to her third term for the Library Advisory Board, and Eva Bonilla to her third term as the Park and Recreation Advisory Board.
Got a motion and a second, counsel? Please vote.
Motion carries. Next will be item 25-5356.
Entertain a motion, counsel. Got a motion and a second? Please vote. Motion carries.
Next is 25-5296.
Got a motion and a second, counsel? Please vote. Motion carries.
Next is 25-5354.
Got a motion and a second, counsel? Please vote. Motion carries.
Next is 25-5353.
Entertain a motion, counsel. Got a motion and a second? Please vote. Motion carries.
Next is 25-5355.
I've got a motion from Councilmember Hall and a second from Councilmember Crane. We have a few special guests here this morning. First, I'd like to recognize Lisa Randolph, Jim Randolph. Great to see you both. Of course, our very own Commander Smith. Thank you for being here. And I know that Chief Aldridge was in and out earlier. I'm not sure he's hiding in the back there. I'm going to read a portion of this resolution so that those in the audience can understand the significance of what this council is approving this morning. The title is renaming Fort Worth Police Department's Fort Worth South Patrol Division Headquarters within the city of Fort Worth as the Billy Randolph South Patrol Division Headquarters. Whereas Sergeant Billy Rain Randolph was an exemplary officer with the city of Fort Worth Police Department for nearly 30 years, who on August 12th, 2024, was tragically killed in the line of duty. Whereas Sergeant Randolph began his law enforcement career in Academy Class Number 91 with the police department, graduating from the academy in the summer of 1995, after having served in the United States Air Force and attending Lamar University with a degree in criminal justice. Whereas throughout his career, Sergeant Randolph was a steadfast leader, a mentor to many, and a respected figure both within the police department and the greater fourth community. Whereas Sergeant Randolph's unwavering commitment to public safety, his integrity, and his compassion left an enduring impact on those he served with the citizens that he protected. Whereas both the police department and the city manager's office recommend and support the renaming of the facility, and of course, his brief biography is attached to this resolution. And now therefore be it resolved by the city council in the city of Fort Worth that the facility currently named as the Fort Worth South Patrol Division Headquarters to be renamed to Billy Randolph South Division Headquarters. We love you, and we're so pleased you came this morning. Thank you, Lisa. Counsel, I already have a motion and a second on the floor. You can please vote. Motion carries.
Counsel, the next items relate to the public hearings relating to the PIDs. So we're going to take them in two batches. The first batch will be MNC 25-0747 through 0758, or 53, and MNC 25-0756 through 0758. And Mayor, I believe we have two speakers on 25-0757.
Okay. Yes, our first speaker is Kai Dumniski, followed by Karen Foley.
Good morning, councilmembers and mayor. It's an honor and a privilege to be here to speak to you concerning a PID that I have been in since, I believe, 2019. Councilwoman Nettles is my council member, and I know Pastor has been frequent in the East Lancaster Corridor more than once during his lifetime, and is aware that we are a very special street in the community. We, I put these up because we have some problems with our PID administration, and I would like to have them withdraw. like to have them withdraw the $300,000 amount for security patrol. Can you show the other second one also? Because it's upside down. Last November, we got a notice that they were going to withdraw the patrol, which is an item in the budget for $300,000. I thought this year we would get a reimbursement on that because it no longer existed. And this year, they've lowered it by $2,000, and we are getting a $308,000 assessment. I know that y'all are very busy, and that you have a lot of documents you read during the year and on different things. My little PID out here on East Lancaster, it's probably not a gigantic issue, but I would like y'all to read the documents and see that this has been a flagrant disregard of, I consider it fraud, and misappropriation of funds, which could be legally, you know. The people who manage these are given contracts, and you don't know them, I don't know them, we don't know where they come from, where they go. So these management people submit this, and y'all just approve it. And they're year-to-year, I'm sure it goes through with all the other documents. But this is, I consider to be something that you need to address, and we need to have the people audited. I couldn't find a meeting this year. Last year, they had one in July, and I tried to attend it, and it just, it wasn't possible. I live 100 miles from here. I've kept this property for 50 years. We built the building in 1974, and I've maintained it with good tenants, clean tenants, and I have some, just some notes to give to my council representative, and I appreciate your time and attention to this matter.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen Foley.
Good morning, Mayor Parker and City Council members. I fully support, my name is Karen Foley, and I am part of the Public Improvement District 20 on East Lancaster. I've had a business there for 25 years. It is a health food store. We teach people how to turn their backyards into gardens of Eden, so that you should be grocery shopping in your backyard. And I can tell you that when we had a private security firm last year, I think it was TIS, Texas Industrial Solutions, if I needed something, I was on the phone calling them, and they had an officer over there in three minutes and took care of the problems. Plus, if you requested a special attention, they pulled into your parking lot, looked around several times a day. Now, with this announcement that our previous speaker referred to, there is no private security. And I got the notice that if I needed something, I'm supposed to text. I don't own a cellphone. I have landlines. So I have no way of reaching the Fort Worth Police Department, who are already on duty for the city. And so if I call 911 and the police do come 32 minutes later, it's not with pleasure because they're out about doing something else. And they seem to have no idea that we are paying additional tax funds, additional taxes for a private security service. So I fully support everything that the previous speaker said, and I ask that this security, either you rehire the people who were helping us, or drop the $300,000. And I do think we also need a refund from last year. Thank you very much.
Counsel, that's the conclusion of our voters on these items. Of course, Councilwoman Nettles.
I was going to ask, can staff address those two concerns, or do we need to wait on this?
Do you want to call down April, Jay?
I think it's kind of, first, I'm kind of hearing about it, and I don't want...
Good morning. I brought with me, I'm Krista Onahosa, Economic Development Manager over PIT Administration. I've brought with me Lillian Collins, and she's management entity over the PIT 20 East Lancaster corridor. And so, yes, I'm happy to sit with the individuals and address if you have a specific question. I think I'm confused on the line item of the allocation to the security. That allocation is fully supported by off-duty police officer with the Fort Worth Police Department. And so we did do away with the private security. When would you say?
November.
November. And so we do understand, and there's been a lot of questions from the community in the corridor on the transition, and explaining and sitting with them that, yes, we did discontinue the private security, but there have been a lot of benefits with bringing in the off-duty police officer patrols and that visibility that they bring, that the private security weren't addressing for a corridor like East Lancaster. And so we have lots of communication with them on a weekly basis. We have our NPOs very involved. We have set lieutenants that we meet with on each of these community members that express concern, and we sit with them and we kind of educate them on, hey, this is what we've done differently, and this is what we're seeing from that change. We're also putting out a mellor here soon that is going to kind of go over those changes to address the concerns like this.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, so it's just approved, and it will have, just not about security, but there's been a lot of misconception on what the PIDs can and can't do in that area. But yeah, we went away, there's no longer private security. But I think the misconception too is private security had the Teslas, where we have actual Fort Worth police vehicles. So I think people just don't think they see the security, but it's just a different view. So.
So they're currently still being charged for, and they also are still actually receiving service?
Yes. We're able to provide about 3,300 additional hours of patrol in Lancaster with that security line item.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's one of the first I'm hearing about, I think, I'm about Councilwoman Martinez. But if we could work with you guys and get with Kai and Karen to make sure they understand, maybe come up with a meeting, that they understand what's actually happening.
Happy to do that.
Councilwoman Martinez, and then I think Jay had some response.
Okay. Yes, thank you, Mayor. And so, you know, we do have a lot of property owners that are a part of the PIT, and I know you meet regularly. Can you remind us how often you meet with, you know, people are invited, property owners are invited to these regular meetings, correct?
Yes. So we meet quarterly, and all of the information is updated, as soon as, all of our minutes have been updated on PIT20.org. It will have all the information, meeting location, previous minutes, and then information regarding the security as well.
And I know Officer Novak, Sergeant Novak is very active, and he will meet with property owners one-on-one. And so I would kindly ask that you also meet with these property owners to educate them on, you know, what the PIT is and responding to trespassing. But if it is a true emergency, they need to be calling 911. So if you could please help them with that.
Okay.
Thank you. Jay?
I just wanted to make clear that today, the City Council will just be approving the assessment rule, not the actual budget. So staff will have time to meet with the concerned residents and then address those issues. And if there needs to be any adjustments, they can be done before the September 16 vote on the actual budget.
Thank you, Jay. There are no more questions. We can keep going. Thank you, ladies.
Mayor, I believe that concludes the speakers on these public hearings, so we can take action on all of the, those 10 PIDs together.
First, I've got Councilmember Beck. Try it again. There we go.
Sorry. I move to close the public hearing and approve MNC numbers 25-0747 through 25-0753, and 25-0756 through 25-0758.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hill? Got a motion and a second, my Councilwoman Peoples?
To reiterate what the City Manager just mentioned, today's action on MNC 25-0756 only approves the filing of the 2025 assessment rule with the City Secretary, and sets a public hearing for 9/16/25. At the September meeting, council will actually vote on the service plan and the budget, specifically referring to Camp Bowie PIT 19. I do support today's MNC, and I want to note that I have been contacted by several assessment payers in the PIT with concerns. I've had conversations with the management company, met with staff about these issues, and I've requested updates and clarifications be made before the budget, the service plan, and management agreement are brought back on the 16th for action. Thank you.
Counsel, any other discussion on this item? Please vote. Motion carries.
Next, counsel, we can take action on the two remaining PIDs, which are the tourism PIDs, MNC 25-0754 and 25-0755.
Entertain a motion, council? Councilmember Crane?
Florida, sorry. Yes. Okay. For the tourism PIDs, MNCs, I move to close a public hearing and approve MNC numbers 25-0754 and 25-0755.
Got a motion and a second, council? Please vote. Charlie, try one more time. Oh, Charlie got up. Motion carries.
Counsel, that gets us to the zoning hearings.
Thank you.
The first is ZC-24-173.
Happy belated birthday, Andy. Councilmember Crane. Again, there we go.
There we go. I am going to move to continue this case to December 9. There's still some things that the developer needs to be working out.
Got a motion and a second? Please vote on continuance. Charlie's not there yet. Thank you. Motion carries.
Next, ZC, just as a reminder, ZC 25-078 was continued to September 16. That gets us to ZC 25-055.
Councilwoman Martinez? Try it again. Is your green light on? Okay. Yep, I don't know, that might need IT help.
That was user error. Sorry about that. Okay, well, I have concerns about this zoning case. You know, the applicant has not made an effort to reach out to the Neighborhood Association or the Sun Valley PIT, but, you know, just actions that they have already done, like remove trees and added fill without permits, really, you know, even raise those concerns further, and this is all done without consideration of the water impact to the immediate neighbors. And so it is for this reason, to allow them, allow opportunity to bring this back within a year that I will deny without prejudice, ZC 25-055.
Got a motion and a second, council? Please vote. It's Councilwoman Hall, if you didn't catch that one. Thank you. And motion carries.
Next is ZC-25-069.
Councilwoman Peoples, we have one speaker on this item. James Watkins? Mr. Watkins here? No? Councilwoman Peoples?
So, Mayor and council, I think you know I asked for a continuance on this when it came up earlier this summer. And because I too am concerned about the secondary effects of businesses like Baby Dolls and our community, and so I wanted to do some research so, to find out about its impact, potential impact on our neighborhoods. Our ordinance prevents SOBs from being 100, 1,000 feet from residential uses, churches, schools, and parks. And we found out that this location is well away from any of these sensitive usage. Also, to further protect the public from secondary uses for sexually oriented businesses, our ordinance requires employees of these businesses to go through background checks and imposes hours of operations. Our ordinance further regulates the interior, exterior, and signage for these businesses. Baby Dolls also has a long history at this location. Before the fire that destroyed it, it was there for decades. And I need you all to understand that these types of businesses are protected by the First Amendment. It is the protected expression, so it must be allowed in Fort Worth under the right conditions. And I believe that our ordinance creates the right conditions. So therefore, I am going to make a motion to approve ZC 25-069.
Got a motion and a second, council? Please vote. Motion carries.
Next will be ZC-25-127.
Motion and a second, council? Please vote. Motion carries.
Next is ZC-25-130.
Councilwoman Martinez, we have one speaker on this item. Reba Henry.
Good morning and greetings, Mayor, Council, City Manager Chapa, and City Attorney Guzman, my Councilmember Nettles, Councilmember for the property that we're talking about, and my friends, Dr. Hall and Dr. Peoples. My name's Reba Henry, and I am the president of the Polytechnic Heights South Neighborhood Association. I lived on Avenue Elm for the last 53 years. As all of you know, Polytechnic has been in some state of transition, transformation, revitalization since white polite began in the 60s. So we are trying at this time to get our arms around our neighborhood and impact change as it comes. Members of the Polytechnic Heights South Neighborhood Association, which covers the area from Highway 287 to MLK, to Miller Avenue and Rosedale to Berry, attended on August 13 a zoning commission meeting on this issue. We opposed the request, and applicant had claimed to get in touch with us, but he did not. The request was passed by the zoning commission, even though we asked for a delay, but the applicant did agree to meet with us. We did meet on the 21st at 6:00 PM, and 16-plus individuals, including the applicant and the pastors from the church that is going to be there, were there. I have the names of those attendees, if we want that for the record any sort of way. We are here today to go on the record with our request. We agree with the presentation overall, but request additional landscaping shrubbery around the parking lot and other areas to improve the lot's overall appearance. Previously, there had been residential structures there, and the coming asphalt view will be uninspiring. The applicant has proposed some trees, which is good, but not totally, as the trees will not mask the boring blacktop and white stripes or cars and various states of grandeur and cleanliness. So we're asking that the, and he has agreed to add more low-level shrubbery around the parking lot and other facilities to make for a better curb appeal. I just wanted all that on the record. Do you want these?
You can get them to Rachel.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Councilwoman Martinez, that's the conclusion of our speakers.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have somebody from zoning? So, like, what amendments would you need to make to add that to the site plan? Increased vegetation? And do they have the space even to add that?
Good morning. I think they would have some space, and then they have to comply with urban forestry requirements anyways. and then they have to comply with urban forestry requirements anyways, which would likely require trees within the parking area. However, we can request a revised site plan to show amended trees that I can approve administratively in bushes along the thoroughfare, if need be.
So how would I, legal? How would I make that amendment? Or what additional language should I use? I plan to approve with those, that addition.
Maybe revise PV to require shrubs along, let me see what street that is. Along Fitzhugh. And then parking within the parking, I mean, trees within the parking lot. What we can do is we can amend the site plan and then make sure that Reba's good with what they're proposing and sign administratively.
Good morning. I believe that your amended motion can simply just notate enhanced landscaping as depicted upon the site plan. That would be appropriate. Yeah, just to make it simple.
Okay, can you repeat that? Because I didn't write it down.
Just approve with, as amended with, enhance landscaping as depicted on the site plan.
Thank you.
If they have a revised site plan, I would just also notate as a, with a revised site plan.
So, thank you, Reba, for attending and speaking and support. I'm glad that the Neighborhood Association was able to meet with the church and has established this new relationship. So I'm really glad that the organization will be in this community and providing very much needed services to the poly neighborhood. So with that, I will motion to approve with amended site plan that enhances landscaping. So I butchered that motion.
We got there, it's okay.
Yes, okay.
Got a motion and a second, counsel? Please vote. Deborah and Mia, try one more time. I don't think I picked up. Thank you very much. Motion carries.
Next will be MNC 25-0762.
Got a motion and a second, counsel? Any other discussion? If not, please vote. Motion carries.
Next will be MNC 25-0760.
Motion and a second? Please vote. Motion carries.
Next will be MNC 25-0761.
Motion and a second? Please vote. Motion carries.
Next will be MNC 25-0763.
Got a motion and a second? Councilmember Hall?
Okay, I will, I will need to recuse myself from this vote because I am an employee of Fort Worth Independent School District.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. Any other discussion, counsel? Not please vote. Motion carries.
Mayor, that concludes all of the action items.
Thank you, counsel. A meeting is adjourned.